From our special meeting, and I have the following closed session report out. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the case of John Parrott versus the City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. And secondly, by a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the case of Frederick versus the City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:01 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, October the ninth, 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs channel on Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays will be on Friday, October 11th, at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, October 15th, at 9:00 AM, on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meetings. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on a particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will be moving into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement, and reading that will be our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove’s first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right. Thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. And would Councilmember Spees please help?
Absolutely. Hand over heart pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a moment of silence. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Clerk?
Under Section 3, the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing Monday, October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples’ Day.
Wonderful. At this time, I would like to call up all of our friends and family, the representatives of the Wilton Rancheria, if you would please join us. As we read the proclamation. All right. The proclamation for Indigenous Peoples’ Day, October 14th, 2024. Whereas the City of Elk Grove recognizes the contributions made by its first and rightful inhabitants, the Plains Miwok and other Indigenous peoples, that have substantially shaped the character of Elk Grove; and whereas we oppose the systematic racism towards Indigenous peoples in the United States and promote closing the equity gap for Indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of the Indigenous peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunity; and whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the Declaration, on December 16th, 2010, and the Declaration recognizes that Indigenous peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of interalia, their colonization and disposition of their lands, territories, and resources; and whereas Article 15 of the Declaration recognizes the rights of Indigenous peoples and emphasizes the importance of honoring Indigenous cultures, traditions, histories, and dreams while obligating states to ensure harmonious coexistence between Indigenous peoples and the broader society. And whereas on October 27th, 2023, the City Council adopted a resolution establishing a land acknowledgement for the City of Elk Grove to express our gratitude to the Plains Miwok who lived on this land before us, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims Monday, October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples’ Day in the City of Elk Grove, and urges all residents to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of Indigenous peoples on this land and support the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, whose tribal headquarters is in Elk Grove, and celebrate and appreciate the contributions of Indigenous peoples to our city. Signed, this ninth day of October, 2024.
Kuti Yama, Majuxshutaka, Kania Yaset, Jesus Tarango, Tribal Chairman of Wilton Rancheria. I’m joined tonight by my Chief of Staff, Sam Ciprit, my wife, Raina Tarango, and my two beautiful children, who are citizens of Wilton Rancheria, J.G. and Yaziel. Our council is in Vegas right now at a convention, and our vice chair is under, she’s under the weather a little bit, so that’s why some of our officials aren’t here tonight. But I do want to open up and just thank you, Mayor. You know, things like this, I think that some people are just checking the box off for tribes or organizations or, you know, anything. But this is meaningful. I think the intent behind the City of Elk Grove and what you guys wanted to do to recognize and honor our people is very intentional, and it’s appreciated by my nation. But I have some words here that I’d like to share tonight, and so with that, I’m going to go ahead and get started. But again, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today on the unceded territory of the Miwok and Nishtunon people. It is with great gratitude and profound respect that I accept this resolution declaring Indigenous Peoples’ Day in our great city of Elk Grove. This moment is not just about recognition of the past, but a commitment to our present and future. It acknowledges the resilience, contributions, and enduring spirit of Indigenous peoples, those who have lived on this land for thousands of years and who continue to thrive and enrich our communities. Today, we celebrate our heritage and honor those who came before us. We remember the stories, the traditions, and the cultures that have shaped our identity as Indigenous people. We stand here not just to commemorate our past, but to inspire future generations to take pride in their heritage and to understand the significance of our connection to this land. By recognizing and celebrating Indigenous Peoples’ Day, Elk Grove takes an important step toward healing and reconciliation by sharing a true and accurate history of what happened on this land and across the nation. It signifies a willingness to confront the historical injustices faced by Indigenous communities and to engage in meaningful dialogue about our shared future. I encourage everyone in our community to use this day as an opportunity for education, reflection, and action. Let us work together to promote awareness of Indigenous histories, cultures, and rights, ensuring that our voices of Indigenous peoples are heard and respected. I would also like to express my heartfelt appreciation to each of you for your leadership and commitment to this resolution. Your support sends a powerful message of unity and respect for the Indigenous communities in Elk Grove and beyond. As we celebrate Indigenous Peoples’ Day, let us not only honor the past, but also pave the way for a brighter, more inclusive future. Together, we can foster a community where diversity is celebrated and all people feel valued and heard. Tongi komo, and once again, for this significant honor, let us continue to work together to create a legacy of understanding, respect, and collaboration. Tongi komo.
Oh.
That’s good.
Are we having the children?
Yeah. You guys want to send them here? J.G. comes down.
Let’s have all the children there.
I have my chair.
You’re here, and then you vote for the votes.
I need a prescription.
Just in time.
You want?
Get over here.
Here we go.
One more target measure. One, two, three.
Thank you. And Chairman Tarango, if we can just, I think we probably want to say a few comments to the tribe and everyone. And we just want to thank you for your continued partnership and the work that our DNI Commission did, bringing that very important land acknowledgement forward. It speaks volumes to not only their dedication, but we wanted to make sure that we and those that follow us honor, continue to honor. And I know that that wasn’t the case always, but it’s important that at this moment in time, that we have this partnership that is very meaningful to all of us, but also this is also about respect for the original inhabitants and all of the struggles that you still continue to face with our missing persons and just a lot of other struggles. So, thank you for continuing to educate us. I’m a lifelong learner. We are always learning, and you’re always, just always right there as gracious teachers. So I want to thank you for that. Anyone else want to say anything?
Yeah. No, I definitely want to thank you and your family for being here today as we acknowledge Indigenous Peoples’ Day, because it is a key part of who we are as a people, as a community. And the leadership that you display, not only here locally, but statewide, speaks volumes to who we are and where we’re going. Today’s Elk Grove is a very inclusive community and continues to be inclusive, and your presence and leadership really exemplifies that, and we really look forward to continuing our brotherhood with you, because it’s that important, it’s really vital for people to know, acknowledge, and participate in everything that is being done to further ourselves as a society. So I want to thank you and the Rancheria Nation for having that presence in Elk Grove and continuing to display that presence.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just building off the Mayor and Vice Mayor’s comments, Chairman Tarango, you came before us at the Sacramento Council of Governments, and I said this before, and I think it’s worthy to say again, valuable to say again, and that is, there is a timing for every great leader, and I really truly feel like you are the perfect leader for your people for this time. If you think back to these last couple of years, the raising of awareness that you’ve done for the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, and how you have elevated your people in not just awareness to anyone who is not Indigenous, but within your own tribal community, you truly are a perfect leader for this time, and so I commend you for that and thank you for your friendship, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Yes. Councilmember Spees?
Yeah. You know, Chairman Tarango, I know you know, last month I went up to Washington for a meeting, the IGA midterm or mid-year conference, and I had the opportunity to talk to a number of other tribal chairman, and what they talked about, I mean, while I was representing my own business and an entirely different thing, I did have conversation or opportunity to talk with other chairman about their relationship with their local governments. And a lot of times we hear, I heard that they didn’t have the best relationships with their local governments. And so I just want to thank you for working with us, thank you that we can all work collaboratively together, and because I tell you folks, it’s just not this way everywhere. And so, thank you, and looking forward to continuing to work with you and with the tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
Chairman, just thank you for your leadership. Been able to witness that throughout the region, and not only that, but as Councilmember Spees was saying, when we went to go advocate for new roads in Elk Grove, you were there with us. Sam, you were there as well. Thank you for that. Rarely do you see tribes and city working together for something bigger than us, and we genuinely and truly appreciate it. Please let us know how we can always help with MIP so that we can be there, and thank you for leading the way with Indigenous Peoples’ Day. I was there, I believe it was last week, and it’s getting bigger every year, and it’s the work that you’re laying down and the foundation for the new generation that’s going to come up. So truly appreciative. Please let us know how we can partner. Thank you.
And I’ll just close out saying, you know, not only are you a wonderful transformative leader for your tribe, but I will say, really for the whole region, we are all better served because of you and all of you. And I know these moments are really important for our youth, and making sure those stories and histories that are so important continue on, and the respect that is long overdue continues on. So thank you again, and congratulations. Next up is our Disability Advisory Committee Annual Update.
Hello. I’m Daisy Hughes. I’m the newest committee member of the Disability Advisory Committee. Our Chair is Ted Clark, and other committee members are Steve Capps and Hennessy Val Chitra, and our staff liaison is Jim Ramsey. I’m an attorney, and I am passionate about disability rights, and I look forward to serving the Disability Advisory Committee in years to come. The City Council formed the Disability Advisory Committee in 2001. The Council determined that three committee members must themselves have a disability, with the remaining two members identifying closely with those with disabilities. The committee has had only 20 members in its 24 years. In 2023 to 2024, the committee revised the Above and Beyond Awards application to include questions the committee would ask during deliberations, like, has the nominee provided services to Elk Grove residents with disabilities in the last 12 months, and how many have benefited from those services in the last 12 months? So that was an addition from this past year. The committee provided feedback to staff on accessibility components of the 2024 to 2029 capital improvement projects, including curb ramps and sidewalk infill, which is the construction of missing sidewalk sections on streets that already have some sidewalks, and including curb ramps. We also advised on the rapid flashing beacon project for pedestrian crossings, the community development block grants, and the city’s affordable housing programs. The committee also provided feedback to staff and to the Sacramento Regional Transit staff on transit operations. The committee awarded the 17th Annual Above and Beyond Accessibility Award to Sierra Douglasler. As a therapeutic recreational supervisor with Consumna CSD, Sierra helps the district to provide accessible recreation programs for those with disabilities. She developed new programs and even took it upon herself to help educate Consumna staff how to better serve those with disabilities. The committee supported the city’s social media campaign observing October 15th, 2023, as White Cane Safety Day, and also supported the Council’s proclamation of October, 2023, as Disability Awareness Month. In 2025, the committee will continue to focus on review and support of accessibility improvements for city projects, city policies, programs, and services, and will continue to be a resource for the Elk Grove Police Department regarding questions about interacting with those with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude the report, or are we waiting on someone else? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Well, thank you again for that wonderful report. Can we, are the other advisory committee members here? If we can stand and just recognize you and...
They got to come up for a proclamation.
Yeah, that’s for the next part. Okay. So we are, okay. Yes. So actually, this is a good time, if you would like to come up. And as we talk about not only your presentation, we do have a proclamation that our Councilmember Spees will be reading, but just want to recognize all of you and thank you for your hard work and dedication to our city. Thank you.
We’re not used to getting the presentation so succinct, so it was...
Like from one to...
It was over before we even knew it was rolling, but...
I taught her well.
That’s wonderful.
Okay. So we have a proclamation recognizing Disability Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas the month of October 2024 has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize individuals with disabilities, and whereas disability in no way diminishes the right of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society, and whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play a vital role in enhancing the lives of individuals with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and public and private employers are engaged in the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings. And whereas the goals of the city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities to support, to make, excuse me, opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, and contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2024 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the community to join in honoring individuals with disabilities. Signed, this ninth day of October, 2024.
All right. We will meet you down there and present this to you. serving on this committee. Thank you. All right. Next up is 4.4, Recognition of the City of Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee’s 18th Annual Above and Beyond Program Accessibility Award. Presentation from the Disability Advisory Committee. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Val Chitra. I’m a member of the Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee, otherwise known as DOC. I’d like to introduce my other members of DOC Committee. First up, Ted Clark, our Chair, Steve Capps, also a member, Anne Hennessy, Daisy Hughes, also a member, our newest member, and Jim Ramsey, our staff liaison, sorry. Tonight, we celebrate the city’s 18th Annual Above and Beyond Accessibility Awards. The award was created to recognize individuals, organizations, and businesses that have gone above and beyond for individuals with disabilities in our community. This award is important to DOC and the city, because it recognizes Elk Grove’s diverse community and care and support provided to those with disabilities. So the nomination application includes these questions, such as, has the nominees provided services to Elk Grove residents with disabilities within the last 12 months? Are the services free from discrimination? Does the nominee get paid for the services they provide? What are the services, why are they needed, and what is the benefit or impact of those receiving these services? I would like to thank all those who are nominated for this award, as they are all doing great work within our community. This year, the DOC Committee will be handing out one award. The recipient of this year’s award is Danny Ford. Danny is a volunteer and board member for Project Ride, an Elk Grove nonprofit that offers therapeutic, recreational, and horseback riding instruction to over 600 riders with disabilities and special needs. For more than a year, Danny has been volunteering as a leader, a sidewalk, or a board member in nominating Danny for this award. Emily Cominiti, I’m sorry if I mispronounced that, Committee Outreach Manager, said Danny is always putting the program first to make sure the riders have a chance to ride. Aaron Claxton, I apologize if I also butchered that. Another of the six people nominating Danny said he not only helps with the riders, the board, but also puts in even more work taking care of the barn, the ranch, and all the horses. Danny is an Iraq veteran while in the US Army. He also has a son who benefited from Project Ride’s opportunities to ride horses. We want to thank Danny for providing all these opportunities to those with disabilities that they might not ordinarily get, and for going above and beyond by working so hard in so many ways for those who participate in his organization. We would like to show Danny our gratitude by presenting a plaque which reads, “City of Elk Grove Above and Beyond Accessibility Award honoring Danny Ford for outstanding and dedicated service to improving the quality of life for individuals with disabilities, Elk Grove, California, October 2024.” Danny is here with us, and we’d like to say a few words when appropriate, and here is the plaque.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I’d just like to thank my family who’s here with me. My son, Chris, has rode with the organization for the last 17 years. He started when he was three through Jesse Baker, who’s contracted on Project Ride. I retired about a year and a half ago looking for something productive to do with my time, and thought, why not try Project Ride? And they just pull you in, and you get pulled in deeper and deeper. And my family’s here with me, who has supported me through the whole process and has put up with the time that I put in, and they’re putting the time in as well, right beside me. And we have many staff, board members, and volunteers here tonight to support me, and I want to thank you guys for being here. I want to thank you guys for being here. This organization, I feel like I give just a fraction when I get back out of it, is absolutely amazing, and it's a great place to be.
You can bring them up if you want.
Yeah, we'll come down there and take a picture. Come on up, everyone. Congratulations. Yeah, it's wonderful, thank you. We'll come back, take a picture with the award.
Say hi.
How are you? Congratulations, well deserved. Thank you. Let's all squeeze in here.
Thank you for your service. You're welcome.
Award counting.
One or one or four. Okay, right. To the side so we get the award in there.
There we go.
Ready, one, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congrats. Congratulations again.
So which brand of the service were you in?
I was in the Army.
The good one, guys, the good one. Yeah, yeah, the good one. I was in both, so I'm good. I can claim either one.
All right, next up, item 4.5, Proclamation Recognizing October 6th to the 12th, 2024 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Assisting is Councilmember Swin.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to recognize these individuals that outside homeowners associations keep us safe and make sure that our city's looking prim and proper. All right. Awesome. So it's my honor again to recognize Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in California. And whereas code enforcement officers provide the safety, health, and welfare of the residents, visitors, and businesses of the City of Elk Grove through the enforcement of local and state laws addressing building safety, zoning, housing, environmental protection, and blight. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles, and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in maintaining our quality of life, so true. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through the application of housing, zoning, building, and nuisance laws. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the City of Elk Grove and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials. And whereas the City of Elk Grove wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to continue the high quality of life we enjoy in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove does hereby proclaim the second week of October 2024 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Accordingly, we encourage our residents and businesses to join with us in applauding the work of these fine individuals. Thank you all so much for your work that often goes unnoticed and not as well- thanked as it should be, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So, one of them, and then we'll squeeze in, I don't know. I'll try to mix it up. I'm gonna take one step. Okay. There we go.
Yeah, that's it. All right, everybody say elk net. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for all of your doing.
It's good to be able to squad. Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Yes, of course. Do you want to say something?
You just can't take a picture in one place.
All right, so off the cuff, it's great to be recognized by the city and by staff. Code enforcement does have a challenging job at times, and I can't thank my team enough. I suppose I should introduce myself first. Sorry, I'm Ryan Huber, I'm the Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Our manager, Jose Mendez, couldn't make it today. He's on a honeymoon right now, so I'm filling in. But I have a great team. We finally got full staffed as of this week, so we have our newest officer here, but hopefully we'll be able to make some more proactive enforcement in the city, help clean it up a little bit. And we appreciate the recognition, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We want to thank all of you for all of your hard work. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Spies?
Yep. So before you go, so it's interesting, because when you're out and about, you always hear folks, hey, I want code enforcement to do this, or I want code enforcement to do that, or they need to do this. Everybody wants code enforcement until it's their turn for the knock on the door, right? But the other thing was, I had a community meeting at tennis court last Saturday. I don't know who's handling that situation. We don't need to talk about it, but I thought what was nice was, as I explained to them, they were concerned about that they had to ask for assistance with a neighbor. They didn't want the person to be in trouble, they didn't want them to, you know, to suffer any penalties or whatever. But as I was talking with them, and I helped them understand what Mr. Mendez had talked about at the Elk Grove 101 in terms of education first, right? Letting folks know, look, this is the right way, this is the expectation, right? And when I helped the neighbors understand that that was the process, they felt much better, because they want those cars off the street, but they also didn't want any harm to the young gentleman who was, you know, running a business, right? So thank you for what you do. I know that when we get an opportunity to explain to people that we're about education first where we can, they very much appreciate it. And so thank you very much to you all for carrying that out. Thank you.
And then Councilmember Swin also would like to say something.
Thanks, Mary. I just want to close out to, we have a beautiful city and big park because of all of you. So please be proud of the work that you do. You can go to a lot of cities, you know, older cities, but you see some dilapidated parts, and you think, wow, I mean, is this really, you know, even in California? And I feel like through your work, we're not even close to that. We're very well-maintained, and so that is in large part because of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great evening. Okay, next up is public comment. Let's see. We have two people sign up to speak. We'll start with Wayne Evans, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to voice a grievance. Full disclosure, I volunteer for the Elk Grove Police Department and enjoy it. Okay, Sheldon Road and Waterman Roundabout. The paper I distributed, page two of, shows a picture. This is from the North End, and it's unfinished. At least, that's my words, it's unfinished. There's some rock, there's some dirt. So I used C-click-fix, submitted a request. And to jump to the chase, the answer was, quote, "The Roundabout currently meets landscape maintenance standards. The vacant sections are un-irrigated and were initially seeded with wildflowers. The city is reviewing options for infilling these areas, but has no plans for renovations at this time." I subsequently tried to escalate this, said, no, okay, how do I escalate? There was no answer. The term I used in here, according to Quora, is perfectly acceptable, I don't need to repeat it, but bottom line, C-click-fix, terms of use, turned me off completely. I couldn't comment, couldn't do anything. I then tried to see the terms, and you need a Civic Plus sign-on in order to see the terms. So I have no idea what they're doing. Anyway, and I searched the City of Elk Grove's website, I could find no information on how to escalate such an issue, so that's why I'm here. You're probably busy, so I'll just jump to the chase. I'm really curious, un-irrigated landscaping, because they also planted wildflowers in the Sacramento Valley in the summer, when we're even getting hotter and hotter. But anyway, that's what I was told. Neither my wife nor I remember any wildflowers growing there, ever. So what I want, ideally finish off the Sheldon and Waterman Roundabout landscaping. If that's not possible, maybe the city can study those options, whatever options they wanted to take, figure out what they want to do, perhaps use Sheldon and Waterman Roundabout as a pilot or a proof of concept for whatever kind of infill they want to do. The C-click-fix request was just shut down. I recommend, don't dismiss people by just unilaterally closing a C-click-fix request. Why don't you at least ask, hey, did we solve your problem? Anyway, thank you very much for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there someone from staff? Okay, Mr. Warner, we'll meet with you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. Next up is Lynn Wheat.
My name's Lynn Wheat, and as I go out into the community and meet my new neighbors, I'm finding many don't understand about the zoo. Yes, we'd all like a zoo, but they haven't heard much about how it's going to be paid for. So tonight, for all those watching, I want to help us out here and discuss how you've elected to pay for our zoo. And I thought it appropriate to take out my checkbook. So here we have our Elk Grove Zoo Park, city-paid taxpayers' money, pay-as-you-go monies, general fund reserve from three pockets of our money, capital reserve, economic development, and opportunity reserves. Second check that the Elk Grove taxpayers are writing, casino payment, roadway, tax and lieu payments for one, two, and three years, and the community facilities payments. Third check is CFDs, and I want to thank my neighbors that live in the Poppy Ridge and Laguna Ridge areas, because thanks to you, you're bringing us the zoo park. Last but not least is our Measure A and Tree Mitigation Fund, smaller amount there, but maybe some of that Measure A money could have helped complete our Roundabout at Sheldon. Last but not least, we now have our Elk Grove taxpayer credit card. So we're going to begin that credit with $114 million bond. And we're going to hope, we're doing this as a pay-as-you-go, and we're going to hope that we receive another $80 million in community partnerships. Total construction doesn't include operation of the park on a daily basis, is $302 million for Phase 1. I think taxpayers are going to have a big credit card, and we're going to have a big debt, and we can pass this debt on to our children and our grandchildren. And we, as taxpayers, we didn't get to choose how we spent our money. You made those choices for us. And I'm clearly hearing that as I meet our neighbors. Thank you.
All right, that is our final public comment speaker, so we will move on to our next item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Berman, your City Manager. Several items to report on this evening. First of all, I'm excited to announce the hiring of a new Assistant City Manager, Jackie Guzman. The position has been vacant since I was promoted about six years ago. Jackie currently works as the Deputy City Manager for the City of Sunnyvale in the Bay Area. Prior to that, she was the Deputy for the City of Cupertino, and served in a number of management and analyst positions for those cities, as well as the City of San Jose and the California Legislative Analyst Office. Brings a wealth of knowledge, experience, unique perspective to the position. Really excited to have her, I'm confident that she's going to continue to help Elk Grove improve and deliver exceptional services to our community. The Elk Grove Animal Shelter marks its five-year anniversary this month. Since its opening, the shelter has taken in more than 11,000 animals, and volunteers have contributed more than 41,300 hours of service. We thank the community for their continued support of the animal shelter and its mission to serve the city's four-legged friends. To view our current adoptable pets, please visit elkgrovecity.org/animalshelter. A couple of school-related things will have an impact on traffic this coming weekend. Police Department will be assisting with traffic controls for two of Elk Grove High School. So the first will be Elk Grove High School Homecoming Parade. That'll take place on October 11th, is Friday. Motors can expect lane closures starting around 12:45 along Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Flure Road. Then on Saturday, October 12th, the Franklin High School Invitational Band Review will bring some of Northern California's best marching bands to the East Franklin area for their annual competition. Look for road closures near Franklin High School to be in effect starting at 10:00 a.m. on October 12th. Both of these events are sponsored in part by the city through the Event Sponsorship Grant Program. Artners will host a free Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, family event this Saturday, sorry, Sunday, October 13th, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Old Town Plaza. The fourth annual event will feature community altar building, painting, and murals, music, and artists in displays. The event is sponsored by the City of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove's Art Commission. Just a reminder, the Affordable Housing Lottery is underway. Members of the community can put their name in for that lottery on the city's website. That does close on October 20th. We also are continuing the Internet Connectivity Survey that's also available on our website that will be up until Monday, October 21st. And then finally, there's two other cultural events happening this month at District 56. First is Diwali, festival commemorating the victory of light over darkness on Monday, October 21st, with the USA Senate Ten Sports and Cultural Association. Then Elk Grove Diversity and Inclusion Commission will celebrate Filipino-American History Month on Tuesday, October 22nd, with a special evening of storytelling and presenters from local leaders showcasing the immense contributions of the Filipino community. Both of these events are free and open to all ages, details on our website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for that great update. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items.
Madam Mayor, before we go into that, I just have a question procedurally. 7.4, I'm not looking to pull it from the consent calendar, but I need to note that I won't be able to vote in favor of it, so how do we want that to go? I don't want to...
I think you vote aye except for that item.
Is that how we're...
Yes.
Is that how we're gonna do it? Okay, cool, I just wanted to be sure I got it right. Thank you.
All right, I'm opening up the public comment opportunity, and we have one person signed up to speak on item 7.4, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. So once again, as I'm...
The event is sponsored by the City of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove's Art Commission. Just a reminder, the Affordable Housing Lottery is underway. Members of the community can, can put their name in for that lottery on the city's website. That does close on October 20th. We also are continuing the Internet Connectivity Survey that's also available on our website. That will be up until Monday, October 21st. And then finally, there's two cultural, other cultural events happening this month at District 56. First is Diwali, festival commemorating the victory of light over darkness on Monday, October 21st, with the USA Senate Ten Sports and Cultural Association. Then Elk Grove Diversity and Inclusion Commission will celebrate Filipino-American History Month on Tuesday, October 22nd, with a special evening of storytelling and presenters from local leaders showcasing the immense contributions of the Filipino community. Both of these events are free and open to all ages, details on our website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for that great update. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items.
Madam Mayor, before we go into that, I just have a question procedurally. 7.4, I'm not looking to pull it from the consent calendar, but I need to, I need to note that I won't be able to vote in favor of it, so how do we want that to go? I don't want to...
I think you vote aye except for that item.
Is that how we...
Yes.
Is that how we're going to do it? Okay, cool. I just wanted to be sure I got it right. Thank you.
All right, I'm opening up the public comment opportunity, and we have one person signed up to speak on item 7.4, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. So once again, as I'm out in the community, I've heard several of our community members and my neighbors be absolutely shocked that you've decided to vote yourself a 300% raise. I do want to come up here and thank Kevin Spees for offering an alternative and being willing to compromise on that. I think he was being really reasonable in his discussion about what would be right, and I commend him and thank him for representing the people of Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment speaker. I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 7.4 for Councilmember Spees.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that takes us to our, yes, sir.
Okay, just, do I, do I have to...
The record would reflect that 7.4 was a no for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, next item is 8.1.
An item 8.1 is a public hearing to consider determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for the Safeway supermarket project.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Oblog, Planning Manager, here to present to you tonight, item 8.1, which is a determination of public convenience and necessity for the Safeway supermarket. This project consists of, again, a public letter of public convenience and necessity. That is required for the Safeway supermarket to obtain a Type 21 alcohol license from California Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC. That Type 21 license would allow Safeway supermarket to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption from that store. The project location is located, the project is located at the Laguna Reserve Marketplace. That's at the southwest corner of White Lock Parkway and Bruceville Road. The Laguna Reserve Marketplace was actually built in about 2006. It's been almost 20 years without an anchor. Safeway is just about at 99% completion. This public inconvenience and necessity determination is one of the last things they need to get operating. It's my understanding they will have an opening here by the end of the month, so I know we're all looking forward to that store opening. The Safeway supermarket itself will be a full-serve grocery store and will be approximately 57,000 square feet. As far as the floor plan, it will be, again, a traditional supermarket. There'll be 15 aisles, along with a bakery, deli, and produce section. They propose to have their alcohol sales on aisles nine and 10, including a refrigerated case. As far as the determination of public convenience and necessity, under state law, ABC does require the applicant to obtain a letter of public convenience or necessity, or a PCN, based on two determining factors. One of those is if there is an over-concentration in that census tract of alcohol licenses, or if that crime reporting subsector exceeds 100%, 120% of the average number of crimes for reporting sectors within the city. For this location, the census tract that it's located in actually has no active off-sale licenses, so this would be the first. Therefore, the Safeway supermarket doesn't need a PCN for over-concentration. However, based on the recent reporting year for crime statistics of 2023, the crime reporting district had 170 crimes, which does exceed the 120% of the average number of crimes per reporting sector in the city. Therefore, a PCN is necessary to be granted by the City Council for this project. In reviewing this request for a PCN, the City Council must consider the proximity and number of other retail outlets selling alcohol in the vicinity of this project, the proximity of the requested retail outlet to schools, playgrounds, and other facilities serving young people, the proximity of that retail location to residential neighborhoods, and whether that retail location would provide a wide range of desirable goods and services, or a unique type of goods and services to the surrounding community. As far as the location of other businesses selling alcohol for off-site sales, off-site consumption in the vicinity, again, the census tract that this project is in has no off-site sales. However, just on this other side of Bruceville, there is a Walmart and Arco AMPM. They do sell alcohol for off-site sales. However, those are the only two locations pretty much in that whole area of town, that new growth area formed by the south part of Laguna Ridge and the southeast planning area. South of that intersection, there's no other retailers until you get to the intersection of Highway 99 and Grantline Road, Camera Road. As far as nearby locations that do serve young people, the nearest park is Bartholomew Sports Park. That's approximately 750 feet from the proposed Safeway store. And as far as the nearest schools, there's no school within 1,000 feet of the proposed sale location. Those nearest schools are Arlene Heine Elementary and Franklin High School, the Franklin High School Johnson Middle School Campus. Both of those are over 1,000 feet from the project site. Again, as far as those characteristics of the site and the sales that the council must consider, there are no other off-sale licenses in the census tract. There is appropriate separation from the Safeway supermarket to existing schools and playgrounds. This will be a full-service supermarket. It's the full, first full-service supermarket south of White Lock Parkway. There is a Walmart store across the street, however, that's not full-service. They don't have fresh meats, and their fruits and vegetables are sold in predetermined quantities instead of by the pound like you would at a regular grocery store. Though the supermarket is adjacent to a residential neighborhood, the sale of alcohol will be limited in the hours of sale from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And furthermore, planning coordinated with the police department in the review of this, and the police department determined that there's no public safety reason to oppose the finding of public convenience or necessity for this application. As far as the environmental review, staff has determined that this request is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15061B3 of CEQA guidelines, which is the common sense exemption. Granting this PCN will expand available product selection at the Safeway store, but not, will not bring about any physical changes to the environment. With that, staff does recommend that the City Council find the Safeway supermarket PCN exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve a determination of public convenience or necessity for the requested Type 21 alcohol license for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the representative from Safeway and their project is also here, should you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Does the applicant wish to speak? It's, if you want to.
Simply, we're excited by opening our new store for you. We'd love your support of our PCN application. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I will open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments?
We have staff's recommendation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I know the residents are very excited as well.
Welcome to the neighborhood, sir.
All right, next item, 8.2.
8.2 is a public hearing to consider three actions. A resolution executing amended agreement on the operating protocols between the city and the Sacramento Transportation Authority related to the Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program. Introduction of an ordinance repealing and replacing Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 1696, to reflect those changes to the fee program requirements pursuant to the amended agreement on operating program, protocols. And for the trifecta, resolution adopting the 2024 Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program Nexus Study and revised fee schedule, which are targeted to be effective January 1st, 2025.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this, this evening with the presentation on the 2024 Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program Nexus Study update. Before I begin, I also want to thank all staff that helped me get the staff report together and all of the updates required. So, just a little quick overview of what we, I'll be discussing this evening. The background on Measure A, and then I'll just call it the fee program, which I'll, and then updates to the fee program, updated fee schedule, agreement on operating protocols, the annual CCI adjustment and administrative fee, Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 16.96, STA's actions for the fee update, and then staff recommendations. So let's, let's go back to 2004, when Sacramento County voters approved a 30-year extension of the existing one-half of 1% Measure A transportation sales tax. The tax is administered by the Sacramento Transportation Authority, STA, and took effect on April 1st, 2009, when the previous tax had expired. The sales tax measure, now known as the new Measure A, also required implementation of this fee program, which is imposed on new development to pay its fair share of transportation improvements. STA adopted that nexus, the Nexus study for that fee program in 2006. And please note that the sales tax and impact fee program are two different components of Measure A, and they both support the Measure A expenditure plan. While the STA administers impact fee program, it requires that local agencies individually adopt the Nexus study and collect the fees. Each jurisdiction was required to implement the fee program as a condition of receiving the new Measure, Measure A sales tax revenues for transportation-related improvements included in the expenditure plan. If a jurisdiction does not impose and collect the Measure A development impact fees, it will not be eligible to receive Measure A revenues. As part of the implementation process, STA also approved an agreement on operating protocols, excuse me, which each local jurisdiction is required to adopt and execute. It sets forth the protocols related to the fee implementation, such as implementation procedures, required dates of fee remittance to STA, and documentation, documentation to be submitted by each local jurisdiction. And STA adopted that agreement in 2008. And then in 2009, the city adopted the fee program Nexus study, added Chapter 16.96 to the Elk Grove Municipal Code, which established the fee program and the city's ability to collect the fees on new development, and approved and executed the agreement on operating protocols. Subsequently, the city has approved and executed amendments to the agreement on operating protocols as required by STA. And so fast forward to today, STA has updated the fee program. This is not a new impact fee, and again, it's only, it's an impact fee only on new development. All impact fee programs require that their Nexus studies be periodically updated. So key updates to this fee program and Nexus study include updated project costs, updated trip generation rates, overall program reallocation, calculates the need for new transportation projects based on new development using updated models, and updates the local arterial program, which includes a new smart growth arterials and corridors program to support smart growth principles within existing communities. So think, like, walkability. Excuse me. Establishes, and establishes new land use categories for accessory dwelling units in compliance with Senate Bill 13, and a tiered residential fee structure in compliance with Assembly Bill 602. So for example, the smaller the home, the less residents live there, which means that there'll be less trips generated and a lower impact on the roads. Sorry about that. Here are the residential fees. The current fiscal year 2425 fees per unit are in the orange highlighted box. And that's under the current program. Well, the updated fees that will take effect on January 1st, 2025, are in the blue box. As a result of the combination of the updates in the previous slide, the overall fees on average have decreased. And then a similar table for the non-residential fees. So STA has amended the agreement on operating protocols over the years, and the city has also, go ahead and approved and execute, adopted and executed the amended versions of those as well. Each local jurisdiction, again, is required to adopt and execute the agreement. Again, it sets the, the protocol to implement the fee program. And in this iteration, further addressed fee reductions for developments in infill areas, areas with reduced parking availability and housing development. The STA shall annually adjust the fee schedule to reflect changes in construction costs using Construction Cost Index. The adjustment takes effect annually on July 1st, and STA notifies the city of the required annual adjustment. The Agreement on Operating Protocols grants the city discretion to charge an administrative fee to support the costs to administer the fee program. As set forth in our municipal code, Chapter 16.96, the city currently charges a 2% administrative fee, which applies to all land use categories, and we're going to keep it at 2% with the new update as well. And actually, all city impact fees do have an administrative fee that we charge to administer the programs. And then Chapter 16.96 of our Elk Grove Municipal Code is, will be repealed and rewritten to correspond with the updates included in the Agreement on Operating Protocols and the Fee Program Nexus Study. Key updates include new definitions, revisions to annual inflation adjustment provisions, fee calculations related to repurposing and reusing of existing buildings, exemptions for accessory dwelling units less than 750 square feet, fee reductions for areas with reduced parking availability and certain housing development projects. Fees for mixed-use projects will be proportionate to the relative footprint associated with the various use. STA has taken the following steps already for the fee program update. They adopted the, the 2024 Fee Program Nexus Study in June 2024. They approved the Agreement on Operating Protocols in August of this year. And STA did outreach during the process of the fee programs update. They coordinated with local agencies participating in the program, reached out to the North State Building Industry Association, and then Kevin Bucy, the STA Executive Director, and I presented to the industry working group here at the city as well. With all of that, staff has the following three recommendations. I don't know if you want me to read that, Jason, or if you want to. But it's adopt, to adopt a resolution...
I prefer not to read it, but they are the three recommendations under the staff recommendation for council.
Thank you. And each of the resolutions and ordinance do have a finding that they're exempt from CEQA. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I also want to introduce Kevin Bucy, the STA Executive Director. He is here to answer any questions you may have, and just to thank you for him being here. And that's all.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Kevin. Good to see you again. All right, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this item, so I will declare the public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions or comments for staff? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to adopt Actions 2, 3, and 4 of the staff recommendation.
We have to adopt Actions 2, 3, and 4 with the staff's recommendation.
Can I get a...
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item. We have no regular... Okay, next item. We have no regular agenda action items this evening, so that takes us to our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I will start to the left. Councilmember Suen, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. We just had our regional SAN district meeting today with Councilmember Robles.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Spees?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
I have nothing to report.
All right, I'll wave my report. So that takes us to our adjournment. We will adjourn the meeting at 7:10 p.m. Thank you, everyone.